I'd like to call the public hearing to order, and I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Jovan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilors, public department heads, welcome to the Town Council 2025 Budget Public Hearing, as well the Capital Improvements Program hearing. So, as you're aware, in early March, I believe April, we presented a draft budget that went through all the subcommittees throughout the departments, and I'd like to thank all the councilors that attended for their support during those budget hearings and the questions that they asked during that process. I'm happy tonight to provide the information for adoption this evening of the town operating budget, and I'd also like to thank all my department heads, as well as Finance Director, Treasurer Collector, Michelle Hill, and Executive Officer of Town Operations, Dean Yakabuchi. As you're aware, I've been here eight and a half months; they've only been here less than four and a half months to five months, four and a half months in January. So, there was a lot of work that had to go in a short period of time to make sure that we have a basis to provide a sound budget for FY 2025. What were some of the budget priorities that we undertook over the past four months? Was, one, to maintain a high level of services to our community; second, fiscal oversight, accountability, and stability; third, to work to fund a munis upgrade of our chat of accounts, which was recommended by the auditor; also, to fund training and development of staff. Last week, I happened to have a podcast training through the Division of Local Services in which they provided the role of the town accountant, and in that presentation, they listed four areas where towns could get in trouble financially. Of those four items, two of them that they articulated in that presentation were a bad chat of accounts and lack of training of your staff. We recognized that immediately when we took over, and as fact, that is why we were proactive in actually addressing it, so it was further reinforced by that presentation. What are the budget highlights for us this year, or this fiscal year? One was to maintain public safety at the current staffing levels, to provide continued excellence of service to an ever-increasing number of calls for service; implementation of the Solid Waste and Recycling Operations Enterprise Fund; a restructure of the finance departments, which includes the Assessor, Treasurer Collector, and Accountant's Office; a restructure of the Inspections Department with permanent full-time Building Commissioner, Director of Inspections; transition the interim Executive Operations Officer in the Department of Public Works to a permanent position to assist the Director in Projects and Federal Reporting Requirements; the reclassification of the Town Clerk to A9; and also to address the departmental expense line items and do it incrementally to address the continued need for transfers throughout the fiscal year. By no means does this budget eliminate transfers; it was a first step to reduce them. Also, the Southridge Public Schools to be funded at the required state foundation level. This slide provides, and hopefully you can see it, what the revenue is for the upcoming year. The revenue is made up of the property tax levy, cherry sheet reimbursed receipts, local receipts, transfers from available funds, transfer from the Bay Path bond premiums, and then those indirect costs that are associated with our enterprise funds. The numbers that we provide for the enterprise fund indirect cost were a result of the recent study that we did on indirect cost and reflect what is the actual impact to our operating budget to be funded. We took a look at the local receipts and have been very conservative with local receipts because we have to remember that in this time of uncertainty with the economy, that we wanted to take a conservative approach to local receipts. And also, this budget is reflective of the cherry sheet that was proposed by the governor and is making its way through the House and Senate for adoption. So, right now, we're using the governor's budget. So, these numbers would be subject to change dependent on the adoption of the state budget. Part of those transfers, you see that we have the commercial drive reimbursement, the Millennium Debt Service, and the Cable Operating Budget Offset. There was one account that we are still trying to verify for income of $80,000 of other available funds, but we were conservative in that number. So, those numbers are subject to change. When we look at the final budget, operating budget, this is what makes up the budgets. As you see on the left, you have the posted public hearing. Those were the numbers that we anticipated when we set up the public hearing, and then the final budget after all the departmental and council subcommittee reports, and we did all those changes that were recommended or that we brought forward, that we agreed upon on the budget. So, as you can see, in general government, we are funding general government at $17,940,301; public safety at $8,870,884; our public works department at $2,574,429; our human resources at $1,160,775; our Bay Path Assessment at $1,210,156; the school department, again, at our foundation level that we are required to spend at $37,302,518; our sewer enterprise fund at $4,498,079; our water enterprise fund at $3,618,44; and the new solid waste and recycling enterprise fund at $2,485,399, for a total operating budget of $79,665,85, with an additional indirect costs that are in the operating budget of $1,541,820. So, the budget appropriation this evening is $81,202,405. So, we run an $81 million business in this town. That is what it costs to operate the town of Southridge. It's quite an endeavor, and it's a credit to all that are employed here to keep this operation going. When it comes to the enterprise funds, you will see that in FY 25, we are proposing a decrease, a decrease of $406,360 at 7.24%. In the water enterprise fund, it is a slight increase. That really was reflective of the indirect cost analysis, and that is $11,275, or 0.26% of an increase, and then the new solid waste recycling. When we looked at these enterprise fund budgets, we made sure that we went through it with a look at no rate increase for this fiscal year for water sewer rates. That is our goal. We will be having a public hearing later in June relative to those rates. We are reconciling our revenues for water and sewer at this point. So, when you look at that and you say, "Why are we having such an increase in our tax levy capacities and our operating budget?", there are several factors that go into this budget that we do not have any control over. Our retirement assessment for this fiscal year was increased by $290,559. That is the assessment that is given to our town by, I always pronounce it, P-R-A-C? Peric? Peric. That's mandatory; we have to pay it. Health insurance costs have increased by $335,824. Our general insurance increased by $278,765. And our local required contribution to the school, and we've talked about this throughout years, more when I was on council as of now, even though we get increase in Chapter 70 funds, our required local contribution is going up at the same time. That is close to $600,000 alone at $599,623. And then we have a contingency in there for Department of Public Works contract negotiations. That alone is close to $1.3 million, I believe we totaled it out. So, that is the cost driver of why we have to do our revenue anticipation with the tax levy and other incomes. Just as a matter of information, these are what we have in retained earnings. Our sewer enterprise retained earning is currently at $2,614,68. Our water stabilization account is at $1,662,563. Our water enterprise retained that we currently have certified for this year is $851,908. However, as everybody's aware, we have an IMA with Chauton, and we'll have to figure out the computation and make a transfer, and then the rest would be transferred into water stabilization, or as we present some capital projects later next month, use some of that money for a capital project as opposed to any borrowing capacity. Currently, we have on hand free cash in the amount of $3.02 million at 4.4% of our operating budget. Our stabilization fund right now currently stands at $5.1 million or 7.44%. So, in regards to the budget, that's where we're at, and if anybody has any questions right now, Dean, Michelle, and I will gladly try to answer as best we can.
Are there any questions, councilors? Council Adams and Council McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to the town manager. It's great to see that the stabilization is where we're supposed to be at, between 5% and 7%.
Yeah.
At this point in time, are we looking at maybe putting more money into that? Are we going to bypass that and maybe put it into the capital stabilization?
So, Michelle, Dean, and I have been talking about what we're going to propose for the funding of free cash that will come out next month. So, we would talk about, no, we do know we want to put some towards OPEB because that is something that we have to put money towards. Our proposal for a tax title allocation because we are, Michelle's been working aggressively on tax titles, so we would need some additional funds for that that then go into the revolving fund. We have to remember too, out of that free cash, fourth quarter of this fiscal year, we have to allocate money for our trash program because it was not set up as an enterprise fund until July 1. So, therefore, we are looking at roughly approximately $500,000 out of that. And then, we also look at what capital equipment we might recommend, a very conservative capital equipment account funding, and then ways to either use free cash towards a priority of a fire station or other means. So, long answer, but no money towards stabilization this year; we would forego that.
Can I just follow up that? Mr. Chair? Just looking up there, it says FY 23, and I apologize if I didn't hear you correctly. So, right now, we don't know what 24 has. Is that?
Well, until we close out fiscal year 24...
24? Then you'll have an idea.
Then we won't know until probably, we're hoping that by our budget proposal and the financial team that we now have in place, that we're going to be able to close fiscal year 24 quicker than we did last year and perhaps have free cash certified earlier than last year. So, we'll have that number, you know, you have to go with the state too because they're also setting tax rates around that period of time, December, November, December. So, that's our hope to have the free cash certified for 24. So, you're always a year behind when it comes to free cash.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Council McCarthy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just, I have a few questions here. First of all, you said human resources, but it says human services. I was just wondering, what encompasses human services?
The human services budget, I believe, is the health department inspections. That's under human services, not human resources. It's all the inspections, human services, maybe community center. I don't have my document in front of me. I apologize.
Okay. And then, I did talk to the treasurer today about the levy limit.
Correct.
In your document, the budget book, it said $28 million was the levy limit, and your budget here is over $30 million. So, how does that work? Is it?
For the levy limit?
Right.
Our proposed levy limit is at, property tax levy limit is at $28,6,531.
And just adding up general government to school department, that adds up to over $30 million. So, aren't you over the levy limit?
No, we are not over the levy.
That doesn't, that's not how it works? So, how does that work?
The levy limit? I will let Dean explain a tax levy limit if he wants to come up. He's more articulate in a levy limit than I would be.
Good.
Council McCarthy, I have to apologize. I'm not really sure I heard your question.
Well, in the budget book, the levy limit is $28 million, but adding up your proposal here, it's $30 million, over $30 million, 30.5 million. So, are you over the, how does that work? Are you over?
Okay. Our property tax levy, the maximum allowable levy, is actually a combination of several numbers. The maximum allowable levy includes your prior year maximum levy increased by 2.5%. On top of that, you can add in your new growth, and then on top of that, you're able to add in any overrides or debt exclusions you have. And it's just, it's a continuing running number each fiscal year. So, for this year, to calculate the $28,600, we started with last year's maximum tax levy of $26,720,006. 2.5% of that is $668,000. You also add in your town's new growth, and in case you're not aware of what new growth is, those are new things to the tax rolls, new houses, people build additions, decks, things of that. Doesn't impact the other taxpayers because it's new taxes coming on to the tax levy. We have a Bay Path debt exclusion which was passed now probably 10 or 12 years ago of $218,000, and we're paying on the fire station this year for the first time at $200,000. That creates your maximum allowable levy of the $28,6,553. That's what's been included in our revenue projections.
General government, public safety, public works, and human services equals $30.5, 30.5 million. Isn't that over the levy limit? Am I reading it wrong?
No. Our estimated revenues for general fund expenses, and it's kind of deceiving in this, not deceiving, but it's hard to follow because of a lot of the charges that the town has to pay aren't reflected in your budget. I'm not really sure why they're not, but things like your cherry sheet charges, your cherry sheet offsets, you don't see those in your line items, but it's taken off. But, we've estimated for general fund expenditures, a budget of $73,824,000, and we've estimated revenues that total the same amount. So, we're balanced, and we're within the maximum allowable tax levy.
Okay. So, looking at your budget here, total budget, it's up about 7.8% over last year. Do you think that's correct? Is that a good number?
I don't have the percentage increase, but that doesn't sound out of the question.
No. And with the water and sewer, 7.10%, and adding the solid waste, you're up to 10.6% over last year.
Right. Well, the water and sewer don't have the, I didn't bring those, the water enterprise fund budget has a minimal increase, and the sewer fund, sewer enterprise fund actually has a 7% decrease in the budget. So, there's no increases in those two enterprise funds.
Well, now, I'm looking at the document that you, that I printed out, that was posted. The sewer enterprise fund, although the budget that we were handed has a 7.24% decrease, the increase, there's an increase over last year of 3.5, 3.6%. And I was wondering why? If there's a decrease in the budget, why is there an increase in the sewer? Last year's sewer was $4.3 million; this year's sewer is $4.5 million, although I think you posted it up there as being even a little higher.
So, Council McCarthy, are you reflective of the documents that were in your packet?
The document?
The water enterprise and sewer enterprise documents that were in your packet?
I'm going by the public hearing document that was posted.
Which is? So, I'm not sure where you're seeing the increases that you're reflective of.
I'm going, last year, I'll just read it to you. Last year, the same document for 2024, sewer was $4.3 million; this year's sewer is $4.5 million. In the document that was published online, the public hearing document.
Well, again, we took a long, hard look at what was actually adopted last year, and we're not confident in all those numbers that were presented. This budget that we're reflecting this evening is through a lot of hard work to confirm what was actually voted on and what we're anticipating for this year.
Okay.
So, the numbers that we're presenting this evening, the water enterprise fund is a roughly, what I said, $11,000 increase with the enterprise funds. So, we're reflecting those are the increases and decreases from what we verified was voted on last year, okay, and what is in munis and what we're proposing. So, there is no 3% increase. That is what our budget documents are reflecting.
Okay. Well, I'm just going by what was, what we voted on last year, and it is...
Well, and that's the problem, Council McCarthy.
It's higher than what it was last year.
What's that?
I said, this year is higher than what it was last year.
By $11,000.
Okay.
Point 26%.
But yet, there's a decrease in the budget, so why should there be any increase?
Decrease in what budget?
The sewer, first of all, the sewer is down, and the water's only up, I think, .25, something like that.
So, I'm not following you. That's what I'm saying.
Oh, all right.
Our water budget is only up $11,000. Our sewer budget is down $400,000. And part of that is we're going to get a new operator online, so we eliminate a lot of the capital that was allocated in that sewer line item because we have a new operator coming in.
Okay.
All right? And we have, like I said, $2.6 million in retained earnings. So, we're trying to give some relief to the taxpayers to make sure that we keep our rates stable and able to reflect projects and get those projects that we have, that I'll explain shortly, ongoing.
Okay. I'm just looking at last year's numbers.
You can't, see, here's the problem, Council McCarthy, and this is what we found. We've been here eight months, I've been here eight months, they've been here four months plus. We were not confident in the numbers that were presented in last year's budget. There were a lot of structural deficiencies that were in that budget that we have to address in this budget. So, when we sit here going, "We have to increase our budget this year?", that's because whatever was presented last year, i.e. insurance, they didn't fund to what they should have funded it at, truly reflective of what they had in documents and what we've heard from some department heads is, "Let the next town manager worry about that."
Well, I can tell...
And I'll let Dean...
And I can tell you this. Go ahead.
This might be the short answer to your question because I think you're looking at documents that were prepared and distributed to the council, you know, for a public hearing for various meetings. If you look at your actual budget book in the enterprise funds, and you look at the approved or adopted fiscal year 24 budget, you'll see the numbers that the town manager has put up on this slide, and then if you move continuing to the right and go to the far right and see the recommendation, and ultimately what was approved by subcommittee, you'll see the numbers that Jack has. So, I can understand where the confusion is coming in because there's several documents with different numbers in it, and it's easy to compare a document that doesn't reflect what was actually voted and what's in the budget documents.
Okay.
So, we've tried to correct that for this year.
I will tell you this, though...
So, we won't have this issue next year.
I will still tell you this, though, when I get my water bill and my sewer bill, it's up of last year. So, whether it was a mistake last year or not, it did go up. My bills did go up.
Well, I don't, I believe the water rate went up, I want to say, wasn't it increased 1%?
Right.
And I think the sewer rate was kept the same.
Okay.
So, if that's the case, then the only change other than that 1% rate increase would be an increase in consumption.
All right. And then, as far as the solid waste and recycle budget goes, the only thing that I've seen in the budget is a cover sheet. I didn't see a line item budget. Is that something that you're still working on, or?
It was sent in packet. It should have been sent in a packet.
I see a cover sheet, but not a line item, like most of the, most of the, in the budget book, we have line...
Well, in the budget book, there wasn't, but in the documents that were sent out, there should have been all three, water, sewer, and solid waste, and munis documents.
Yes, I did get that, but it's just a cover sheet. It's not, and it tells you what the budget is, but not a line item, like...
You should have, yeah, should have gotten a final line item budget, two pages, a cover sheet and the second page, and I don't know if that came or not.
Yes, I did get that.
That's, that's...
What I'm, all I'm saying is that usually, most budgets, we have so many police officers by name, their wages...
Right. So, this, all we gave out for the budget hearing was not the detail like we did in the budget hearings.
Right.
But we had articulated what this sewer enterprise budget, or the solid waste budget was when we adopted it back in January. That presentation was given when we set the rate, so that had all the positions. So, we're still building out the munis for the enterprise fund, but what we did is set up the cost centers within that reflective of what we had.
Okay. And then, finally, one last thing. Last year, we used quarter of a million dollars in stabilization fund. We're not planning on using any stabilization this year?
We didn't use stabilization, we used free cash.
To offset, okay, free cash to offset the...
Tax rate?
The budget. Are we going to use any stabilization money this year to offset the budget?
Our budget presentation right now does not reflect any use of one-time monies for the budget at this point, so our recommendation is this budget at this time. Because once you put in those one-time monies, you've got to remember that's built into developing a structural deficit. But we weren't, we have not put in any use of free cash right now into the budget adoption.
Okay. Thank you.
Council Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. For the record, Council McCarthy, last year, budget was made by unprofessional people. They have no clue about accounting, have no clue about budget or anything. It was made temporary to let the town move on because we used to have internal town manager, and the previous town manager have no idea what's going on. So, I think this year's you can't match with next year, if it was last year, we can go forward this year and next year, maybe you get better idea if the number correct. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Just to follow up on the previous speaker's comments, yes, absolutely. We now have a better understanding of what goes through or goes into our revenue, and we're going to continue to fine-tune that for next year. So, this fiscal year budget was really to set us on a path to have financial stability and oversight so that we can be sustainable for the years coming forward. So, that was the goal behind this budget.
Thank you.
Any other questions by any other councilors? Just a comment from the chair. It's been a trying year. We've identified many problems and cured them. There are others we have to work on, but I knew that this year was going to be trying on our new employees, our new help, a new manager. But I know one thing, one step at a time, we've tackled issue by issue, problem by problem, and we've, as a council, we've stayed stable, we stood behind the workings. We're going to continue to do that, and as we evolve into next year, we'll be better off next year than we are right now, only because of this munis ledger, the type of accounting that we were doing, and things were happening in the financial office, and also the revolving door of some of the positions. So, I think moving forward, we're in a good place. I think, I mean, I'm going to be supporting the budget, and then next... I think, I mean, I'm going to be supporting the budget and then next year, another year to look at things, we'll have better numbers next year and I think we'll look at it through a different lens. But I'd just like to thank the town manager and the support staff, finance directors and finance department for doing what they've done today. Thank you.
I just, just as a final comment on the budget part, again, it's been a lot of team, teamwork on this and I just look back to where, walking in the door eight months ago where I couldn't provide any information to the town council or departments about how we were going to fund things and looking fast forward in a short period of time that we're able to provide a sound budget and provide information to the council that's best to move us forward. So with that, the next part is this capital improvements program. I'm just going to say right off the bat, the document that I'm presenting to you is really a snapshot of information that we've plugged in that, as I go through my presentation, I hope you bear with me as to why there's not a lot of detail in this actual capital improvement program document. We continue to have a backlog of capital projects that include road and facilities improvements. And this is the policy directive as to how much we should in our operating budget dedicate to capital, which if we were to do seven and a half percent on the budget, operating budget that we have, we're talking millions of dollars that we would have to allocate yearly for a capital program that we simply don't have at this time. So what did I do over the last, along with everything else that we had going on with enterprise, I'm going to be honest with the council, this document is being provided because the charter tells, instructs that we have to provide a document to you. However, we did not spend a lot of time on this due to the fact that we had the enterprise fund program to implement, the budget to figure out. So what I did over the last couple of months was take a look at existing capital accounts and what we've had funded through the last few capital years and look at that with it through the lens of where are we right now in items that we have funded and how can we develop a plan within the next couple of months to implement and go out to bid on projects that we have already allocated money to and take a fresh look at other capital projects. So I started with capital of FY '23. You'll take a look at that sheet and you'll see these were all the items that the town council in May of '22 allocated to capital equipment. We started the year at $1,467,044. And as the time, as of the date that I did all the reconciliations on these accounts that were open, we had more money in the account than what I found for a vote. As you can see, we still have $1.4 million in equipment and items that are still pending that we'd like to get finished this fiscal year coming up, FY '25. So you have some upgrades to the town hall, sweeper, which is on order, a spreader, which is on order, clamshell and a 10-wheel dump for the DPW. The police cruisers are about the only thing that we are able to get in somewhat of a timely manner. And we have some sewer and water retained earnings that we allocated to projects that are still pending. The polymer station upgrades are ongoing at this time. So that's FY '23. FY '24, we had $990,000 worth of items allocated to. And we still have $790,000 worth of equipment that we are waiting on. And a lot of this is due to supply chain issues, so we have to keep cognizant of that as we, as I present in the next couple of weeks, some items to purchase for capital equipment. So that is the capital and we like to get those ongoing, get statuses on those and get those items into the queue. Now, if you look at all the capital projects that I, as a counselor, and you as councils have allocated money to, just in the town hall, we still have $372,000 pending in capital improvements to this building. As you're aware, we have a grant application out to hire an architect to do a facilities study. If we do not get that grant, I did state to the council that we would come back and use some of this money to hire the architect to do a study on this building to see what we should prioritize as a council and town to do these improvements. But you'll see, the rear handicap entrance is through FY 2018 of almost $100,000. Nothing's been done. Town hall renovation, still have $45,000 in it. The generator, which the council generously gave to the town hall last year of $135,000, is great to say, hey, I want a generator here, but there's been no forethought of where do we put a generator on this campus? Where does it go between buildings? Where is the air intake into the building? So we may take a look at that 135 and combine this into a whole town hall project and reallocate monies as we get that facility study completed. Department of Public Works has some minor monies left and we do know that there are some major things that need to be done down there, such as the roof, there's a sinkhole in the middle of the parking lot, so there are some monies there. Look at the library, you got $245,000 still sitting there for improvements that things had not gone out to bid. You take a look at that improvements on painting, I have a date of 2021 on that. However, if you look back in the documents, Kevin Pecos, when he was the interim town manager, wrote an invitation for bid for this project using that money. So we have redrafted the invitation for bid and hopefully we'll get that out shortly and get that done. Again, you have gutters and downspouts that we've talked about since 2019. And then last year, the council gave $30,000 for a boiler. And then when I asked Rich at DPW, are we aware of a boiler issue? And there was none. And then when I followed up with Margaret, it's actually for the HBAC, if we have any repairs that would have to be done to that. And then we did allocate money for the start of the weatherization project and we are waiting the incentive to get that back. So that's how much money we have there. And we also have an elevator modernization project that we have to do. And we've had conversations with Margaret about a possible grant, ADA grant that she's going to pursue, or if not, she has state aid that is given to the library that we'll have money for, but that's another major project for the library. In regards to police, they had epoxy flooring, which was completed, paving the parking lot, which will be completed hopefully soon, and some IT equipment. And in the community center, this is how much money we have allocated to the community center right now, 235. And then another $178,000 worth of opera projects. And as I've stated over and over again, we have those ongoing. So that are the projects that we would like to make sure that we prioritize this fiscal year and work with the council to develop a new capital improvement program and pretty much restart those items. Now, if you look at the capital stabilization account, that's how much money is left in capital stabilization, which is 551, 563. And those are the items that we allocated out of that account last year. So we have 551 left in that account available for any capital equipment this year. We always talk about what capital accounts have been out there for a number of years and what we can close. These accounts were all listed in the FY '22 audit. I went through all those accounts and verified how much money. Excluding the top two that are highlighted, that would leave $84,000 of potential money we can reallocate and go into capital stabilization this year for any capital purchases that we'd like to do. As you see, there's some that are outstanding for a number of years, some small dollar amounts. We did take $25,000 last meeting, I believe it was, for the rail trail. We had that rail trail stabilization account, so that was used appropriately for rail trail oversight for the, for the bid. And that bid is anticipated to come in or come in June in a few weeks. So that's what we have in that money that we could possibly reallocate. These are the items that I have identified with our team for FY '25 major capital, and we don't even include the school in there. The fire station's number one, the animal control shelter. We have East Main Street road improvements, Ashland Ave Bridge, Elm Street Bridge, rail trail, Hook Larish Shell Downtown Tip Project, River Crane Project and sewer, sewer treatment plant upgrades, the Headworks Project, which the council authorized a $2 million borrowing number of years ago. If you look at that list, that's everything that we have to accomplish as a team and put out to bid and manage just this fiscal year. So that is our priority when we build out the capital improvement program for this upcoming fiscal year. Now, what are we doing for planning? Well, working with Dr. Vala, we have the Southbridge Public Schools Master Facility Plan that we're awaiting those results. So therefore, why should I take this capital improvement program plan and plug in things for schools when we're having a whole study done that will take a look at the current plan and reprioritize how we go out in a number of years? So it's just an exercise of why would we want to just plug in numbers just for the sake of plugging in numbers? Again, we have the Massachusetts Preservation Project Grant, Town Hall Facilities Study. Again, once that study is completed, then it would give us an accurate blueprint of many things that we should prioritize and how we go about it. And then we have the Green Communities Grant, weatherization of town facilities that we just applied for at $225,000. So we have a bunch of projects that we can plan out into the future in a thoughtful, new, fresh approach. Because I don't know about anybody else, but if you look at that document that I handed out to you, it's very confusing right now. And I think if you look at some of the highlights that I have in there, the gold were things that they proposed for this year, but we have no documentation for the town hall. They, you know, we have a roof, we have design, but there's no documentation as to what the thought process was on that. If you look at the beige numbers with, that are highlighted in red, those were all items in the budget before that were funded or pending. And then you'll see, and I don't know, I know as a counselor, I used to sit there when the town manager presented the capital improvements program and a department would have on there, say ambulance, we don't fund it, and then it disappears on the program and you say, well, what happened to that ambulance? Where did it go? Where are you prioritizing? So we have to take a real fresh look at how we lay out this improvement program realistically and how we map it out to make sure things that we don't fund stay on so we don't lose track of it, because obviously we have to prioritize funding. But I don't know about anybody else, but that's my thought process on that whole program. So that's the facilities planning. This is what the town charter says that we'll adopt a plan. And this is our plan of action for the year. I hope the council will accept. To develop a clean, new six-year capital plan based on results of studies and inventory of equipment, because I want to get a handle on the equipment that we have. What does DPW have? What years, mileage and all that? And that's conversations that we had also about thought process of hiring a fleet manager of some sort, either the head mechanic at DPW to do some fleet management, but that would be in the next fiscal year. Finish the financial analysis of the existing available funded and debt capacity and recommend town council allocations to the road infrastructure projects based on the opinion of probable cost. And those bids are now going out, so we'll have a handle on that. And then the town manager will recommend to the county council to close out the old capital projects and reallocate funds to the capital stabilization fund. We'll make a recommendation to the town council for capital equipment purchases. Work with the fire station building committee on the rebid of the project. Develop the RFQ for the architect to complete a town hall facility study pending the award. If not, we will go forward with it anyway. And then review with the school department and come up with plans for the school master plant recommendations. So that's what I have on the capital improvement program. That's where we're at as we stand today. There's a lot of work in FY '25 just to get those projects ongoing. So we will talk as the financial team, especially on the road projects, of what, what we're going to need to either borrow or within, because there are some water and sewer elements to those projects and what will we do to either use retained earnings or water stabilization so we lessen how much we borrow and come up with a comprehensive plan? And then look at the borrowing capacity to go out to rebid the fire station and see, do we have the debt capacity? Does the town council want to support that? How do we look at that project? Use either some free cash or borrowing? Borrowing would be our last resort or free cash and come up with a comprehensive plan. But again, I look back where we were eight months ago, not knowing where any of these things were, to where we're at today that we can probably come, well, not probably, but we can come up with solid recommendations for the capital plan by the end of the fiscal year. And we have to make those recommendations when it comes to the use of retained earnings, free cash by June 30th. Otherwise, they'll close out to be recertified. So we will have those recommendations. The recommendations will be forthcoming.
Any questions by council? Councilor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not really a question on this. I thank you, Jack, and your team, because, you know, part of the planning process is to follow up on that plan and follow through with it. And then, you know, obviously, there's roadblocks through the planning process, but the follow-up is the key. And I know you have that up there and it looks really nice, but I know there's a lot of headaches behind that right there for the next 12 months. So I, for you and your team, so I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys going back and taking a look at what the council had reserved for a lot of capital projects. And unfortunately, you know, we had a high turnover from 2020 to, to even now. And that's just the way it's been going throughout municipalities. I will ask, I, we'll make a statement. I, we, town council did give the public schools, I think it was $300,000 for the master plan, which opens up, if I'm not mistaken, during the brief grants, possibly from the state and other to help us out, pay for some of that stuff instead of just capital. I know we'll have to pay probably a percentage or our own fees, but I think that's a great plan when it comes out. I hope it is detailed as possible because our schools actually need it with the infrastructure work. Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all I got.
Councilor Shinya?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Town manager, sewer, not the sewer, the landfill royalties, I couldn't find it in my book. What's the balance of that fund and is there any plans of that money to be used to offset something or to be used?
At this moment, no, we don't have any plans on using those monies right now, but I can verify that information with you and we can have further conversations about thought process on landfill royalties and where we're at on that.
Do we know how much money's in that account?
I believe it's approximately 4 million.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor McHedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for you. First of all, last year, I thought the town council, or it might have been the year before that, I thought we voted to change it to a five-year capital plan.
I presented five years. If you did, that's great. The charter says six years.
Yep.
So.
So that won't get changed until?
Yeah, and I know Councilor Adams had talked to me about the charter changes and I have to follow up on that. But I projected out five years on the document that I gave.
Any other discussion?
Well, I just, one more thing. So you're not presenting a five-year plan tonight, correct?
The document I gave you was five years. '25, '26, '27, '28, right?
But I mean, I'm used to, again, I'm used to seeing a list, this is what we're paying for this year.
I plan on presenting that next month. Once we look at the.
So we're just voting tonight to vote on the capital plan?
Right. We, not what we're funding. This is just the program improvement, the capital improvement program.
And what you've highlighted in yellow here is what you're planning on spending?
No, that's just things that were booked for this year that I have no documentation to say why and a reason. So I tried to color code it and try to give some, because everything was all in white. So I'm going to be honest with you, our recommendations are going to be very conservative and when it comes to equipment. It's going to be on a needs basis, based on, we do know that the Trailblazer in the inspections Department was taken off the road because it was all, the frame was rotted, so the inspections Department's going to need vehicles. We have a forest, Forester that's part of the grant, so we're looking at DPW trucks and vehicles that they have now and repurpose some things to different departments. So we're looking at that plan, we'll have that presentation for you next month.
Thank you.
Any further discussion by any other councils? Closing statement?
I'd just like to thank the council for their work on this and I look forward to working over the next fiscal year as we develop this plan. Any input, I know Councilor McHedy was very heavy into the capital improvement program, so perhaps working with him as a sensible plan on how we approach this. I gladly accept anybody's input as to how to make it, because it's the council's plan as much as it is the town manager's plan, it's the town plan. So I think we really have to all get on board as to how we want this to look and move forward. But I thank you all for your time and consideration on both the budget and the capital program.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, I'll call the public hearing an end.